And the press has been duly notified. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. This past week, the community lost Kitty Updike, who was a tremendous woman in this community, and she did a phenomenal job. And she was a friend of mine, always an ear to listen to what I had to say, and she always gave good advice. So please remember her in your prayers. Thank you. Item number one on the agenda is public comments. There are no public comments? No sheet? Nobody signed up to speak? Okay, great. Closed public comments. Item number two on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Council, before you were the regular city council meeting, minutes of March 21st, special city council meeting of February 8th, and special council workshop of April 5th. Are there any questions or deletions to those minutes? Hearing none, those minutes stand approved. Item number three on the agenda is the special presentations, and first one is an upgrade to the Internet, Comporium Communication, and Sean Barnes is going to speak to us. I don't know if the rest of council has heard, but I've heard a lot of complaints about the service. We've reached out to Comporium to discuss the service, and we felt it would be important for the citizens, as well as the rest of council, to hear what Comporium's doing in our area. So Sean is here to tell us what's going on. So welcome, Sean.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council, for letting me come this evening and share with you and with the citizens of Tika K about the improvements that we at Comporium are making to the broadband system in your city. And as Mayor Shepherd mentioned, it was started maybe in the latter part of 2014. We started to get complaints about the quality of service, especially during peak times. People weren't able to hit the speeds that they were expecting. So what we've done is we've taken a look at the existing system, and we have put in plan or put in action a plan to upgrade the system, which should come to an end, at least for this part of the improvements, right about the end of this year. So if you look at the timeline that I've got up on the screen, back in third quarter of 2014, we began the process of redesigning our nodes for the city. And what a node is, is basically if you want to think about it as an electronic neighborhood. It's a series of houses and/or businesses that are all linked together back to one local piece of equipment. As we moved into 2015, we actually got to work with putting in new cables, splitting nodes. We had a company called Deep Fiber Solutions come out. I believe you were able to come out and observe some of the work that they were doing. And what their job was, was to replace some of the old and aging trunk coax cable with new fiber optic cable, which was allowing us to push the fiber network deeper into Tika K. As this year wraps up, we will complete this phase of the improvements. So by the end of 2016, all of the peninsula should be upgraded. So when I say upgraded, what I'm talking about is we're taking the nodes and splitting them. And before we even started with that, we made two major improvements to our system. First and foremost, we took the existing two redundant 20-gig circuits that we had that connected us back to the Internet backbone, and we replaced those with two 100-gig redundant circuits. So basically, five times the amount of data was able to flow through our system. After we did that, we went through and replaced a piece of equipment called a cable modem chassis. And basically, what that is, is a hub for all of the nodes. And replacing that single piece of equipment meant a great amount of improvement for the entire city. After that, we improved the amount of bandwidth that was able to flow from that hub to each of the nodes in Tika K. So then we got into the actual process of splitting nodes. And node split is exactly what it sounds like. You take a node that might be serving 400 people or so, and you split it into two or maybe even three nodes, so that each of those nodes is serving maybe 100 folks. And what that allows is for better access to the bandwidth that's available. It allows for more reliable, more quality service. At the same time, we started splitting those nodes, we had some available bandwidth or frequency or space on the spectrum from taking all the cable channels to digital. So we reallocated those to data usage. When we did that, that further increased the amount of bandwidth that the upgraded nodes could get to. And while we were in the process of that, we know we were wanting to roll out higher speeds, so we started swapping modems out, which is allowing us to provide a bigger pipe from the house back to the nodes. So when I talk about data usage and data capacity, it's a very dynamic kind of a situation. And when we got to the problem we got to back in 2014, the issue arose because data usage exploded. It did so at a pace that was far greater than what we were able to anticipate. But we heard the complaints, we looked at the system, and we put, like I said, an action plan into place. So when you look at the bars for 2014, the blue bar is the actual usage and the orange bar is what was available. And if you look at that, you might think that there's plenty of capacity there. Why would people be calling in? But this is an aggregate, it's an average across all of Tika K. So there were people that were seeing or basically hitting the ceiling on capacity. So we went ahead and addressed that. In early 2015, we about tripled the amount of bandwidth that was available to the city. And then for the 2016 and 2017 bars, what you see, what you see up there, the blue one is lighter because it's a projection. That's where we think data usage is going to be. The orange ones are actual. So by mid-2016, we should be at just below 24 gigs available for the city of Tika K. And then by the end of the year, when we wrap up this phase, we should be at almost 28 gigs available for the city. Talk a little bit geographically about where we've made improvements. The green area that you see there, basically everything that is south and west of here has been upgraded. Those nodes have been split, the fiber has been pushed further into the neighborhoods, the bandwidth has been increased. If anybody living in those nodes is still seeing issues, that they're still seeing slow speeds, let us know. The most likely scenario in this case is that there's something that's wrong either at the side of your house or back where you connect to us. And so we'd like to know about it, so we can find out what the problem is and get it fixed. The areas you see up in yellow, those areas are under construction right now. So that would be the neighborhoods that pull off of Seven Coves, off of Water Trace, off of, I think it's Trail Ridge. But those should be wrapped up before July gets here. The areas in orange, they are in design right now. Construction should start on those, probably third quarter, be wrapped up by fourth quarter. And just as reference, the areas that are marked up in blue there, those are the neighborhoods that are a little bit on the newer side, maybe five, 10 years old. Those are the fiber neighborhoods.
Can you go back a second, please? The bluer neighborhoods are the fiber neighborhoods, is what you're telling?
Yes, sir.
But there are some within the peninsula that I'm seeing are blue as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so then Silver Gull being one of them?
I believe you are correct.
Is a fiber neighborhood. So if your neighbor is on Silver Gull and his Internet is faster, it's because he's a fiber neighborhood. Now here's the question, why are some neighborhoods fiber and some not?
It's simply a matter of when they were built. We didn't really start pushing fiber to every neighborhood until the early 2000s. And everything that's built now is fiber straight to the side of the house.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing that we've done to try to improve the quality of service here in Tika K is we've changed the way that we address troubles. We found that we were having to go back to houses multiple times, and we've started putting some processes in place to make sure that when we come out, when we disrupt your schedule, make you stay at home so that you can wait for us, that we only have to do that one time. And as a result, you can see that in the last year and a half, trouble reports in Tika K have very steadily dropped off. The two spikes on there are weather. One of them is the snow magedon, and the other one in September was a particularly bad thunderstorm. So not much we can do for those yet. And lastly, and probably something y'all are all very interested about, what are the next steps for Tika K? And I can tell you that we are sensitive to the needs of Tika K. We've been sensitive today to the needs of Tika K as we were when the photograph up there was taken, which is back in 1971. And just an interesting fact, the man in the photograph in the white t-shirt or white button-up shirt is my grandfather.
Really?
Vlad Barnes Jr. Yeah. Back then, he was Vice President of Operations for Fort Mill Telephone Company. Today, he is our current Chairman of the Board. So the question you ask about the disparity in the neighborhoods between who's got fiber and who has cable is something we get a lot, and I can tell you that we are in the process now of determining what's the best course for us to take in order to get the city of, everyone in the city of Tika K, access to gigabit service. We're not sure yet whether that's going to be leveraging the existing coax system we have. There are some new technologies that are on their way out that would allow us to do something like that. Or if it's going down a different path, then looking at a different system. But I can say that our engineering department is actively working on it, and we should be able to get to the point where everybody in the city has access to gigabit, probably somewhere in the next 48 to 72 months. So that is a very nutshell version of what we've been doing. But do any of you have any questions?
I do. A lot of residents have been saying they're calling, but they're being told that their router is the problem and not the modem. So they're being told to go get a new router, and the problems are still existing. So with the area that has been upgraded, and I just got a letter in the mail saying, "Go pick up your modem from you guys." So with that being done, then there won't be a problem any longer with the router?
If the router is genuinely bad, then there could still be a problem? Is it, are they just getting a phone call in response from our tech support, is what it sounds like to you?
They're calling because their service is intermittent. Keeps going out.
Well, and I could speak on that as well, because I dealt with it personally, where if I'm paying for 100 gigs per second or 100 megs per second, where I called and said, "Speed test is showing 27 megs per second." And well, the router doesn't support the 100, so you need to go out and buy a router that supports it, because the modem that we have with the built-in router doesn't support 100 megs per second. And so I had to go out and, I personally went and bought a new router to support the 100 megs per second. I think that's what Jen's saying that she's hearing as well.
All right. Without looking at the trouble tickets, I can't tell you specifics what went on, what I can do is go back and take a look and talk to our call center and see what their responses are and see if we can improve that.
David? All right, so your suggestions are for the residents who have been improved. Can we put that map back? Can that go back? You got, I'm sorry. So those residents who are in green have been improved, all right? If they're not seeing an improvement, what do you suggest they do?
If they're not seeing an improvement, call and let us know.
Okay. And I assume that's, and probably in the next couple of months, that's going to be the same thing for yellow?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then when are you going to finish the brown section there? When is that going to?
Before the end of the year.
Before the end of the year. So January of next year, they're not seeing an improvement, they're calling you guys?
Correct.
All right. Do they mention anything about hearing? Do they just call anyone in particular? Is there a person they can, a point person they can speak to? Or a point group that they can speak to, so that they know that their whole system's been upgraded and the call center is not saying, you know, "Hey, we need to upgrade your system" or whatever?
There isn't at this point, but I can work with the call center to see if perhaps that's something we can do.
Okay.
Get a select group of people that are a little bit more familiar with what's going on here in Tika K.
That would be perfect.
And then that way, you're not bouncing around from person to person.
Great, appreciate it. Sean, thank you very much for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Item number 3B on the agenda of the Oaths of Office, border zoning appeals. If you guys would come up here, who is getting sworn in? Yeah, please. Do this. Gentlemen, would you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified, according to the Constitution of this state, to exercise the duties to which you've been appointed, and that you will, to the best of your ability, discharge those duties thereof, and preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and of the United States. So help me God. Congratulations. Thank you. And if you guys would move, and sign those, and then give him a copy.
Get your crutches there.
You know what? Why don't you sit down, we can bring it to you? Item number...
3D.
Item number 3C on the agenda is the Citizens Academy. Susan Britt conducted the Citizens Academy again this year and did a phenomenal job. And how many do we have?
We had a total of 31 registered.
31 registered for the Citizens Academy. Susan, you want to talk a little bit about it and what it does?
Sure. The purpose behind the Citizens Academy has been to really educate the residents on city government and the roles of the different departments, and it really fosters some understanding and some networking between our citizens as well. Give you an opportunity to ask a lot of questions and just get to know how the city operates a little bit better. And this year, I think we had an excellent attendance. Consistently, we had at least 25 people per each session, and overall, the evaluations were really very, very good. And I take all those summaries, and then we send them out to everyone. And we'll be doing another session in November, and we use those comments and evaluations to kind of help us fine-tune the next presentation. So really glad everyone who came, and hopefully, we've got a good number here tonight. So when I call out your name for your graduation, if you'll come forward, Mayor Shepherd will be giving you your certificate. And if you'll hang around up here after that, we're going to get a photo. And we have some special honor graduates that we'll be calling out kind of at the end, and I'll explain a little bit at that point what you needed to do to be an honor graduate. So Suzanne Chapel. Nancy, and I'm going to, thank you, Nancy. I just say Nancy because I can't pronounce her last name.
Nancy, what's your last name?
Want to pronounce it for them, Nancy?
Everly.
Everly.
Oh, that's pretty easy.
Ben Gare. Ruth Anheiser. Lois Gaye. And Robert Gaye. We had a lot of husband and wife teams this year. Melissa Lampert. There you go. Christine Lechik. Thank you. Hope and Jim McBride. Where's Hope tonight?
I don't know, but I know her.
John and Jody Maccow. Pam Manley. Ray Martin and Patty Martin. Slow down, okay. These are the Martins. Paola Navarrett. I'm pretty good at that one. Chuck Rice. Joe Soprano. And Jack and Linda Stevenson. And Wesley Warden. As I said earlier, we've got some very special honor graduates. To be an honor graduate, you had to attend all five sessions. To be an honor graduate, you had to attend all five sessions. You also had to attend council meetings and verify that you were there, where I had to sign your signature on the agendas, our planning commission. Walt Przynski, our first honor graduate. Walt liked it so much, he attended the last one too. Everybody's got to kind of scooch in here a little bit.
Two rows, two rows.
Come on, Walt. Photobomb.
Yeah.
Item number 3D on the agenda is the recognition of firefighters. Is Chief Zemansky here?
He is. Looking dapper at that. He's all dressed up with someplace to go.
Don't want me to sing, do you? Mr. Mayor and council, thank you for allowing us this time in your busy schedule. We are here to recognize three firefighters who went out to and called. The lady was spreading mulch, it was an EMS call, and when, after the ambulance took her away, the guy stopped and they finished the job for her, put the mulch out that she was doing. So it was amazing. We got 3,300 likes, 400 shares, got on SC.com, it's all over North and South Carolina. I got calls from Macon, Georgia, Charlotte, Rock Hill, about what a great deal. And we call it going above and beyond, and these guys amplify that. Every day, they're on shift. So I'd like to, first, I'd like to ask Kyle Dowell, firefighter. Way to be, fellas. I'll be back a little later.
Item number 3E on the agenda is the recognition of police officers. I'm going to ask our police chief to come over now.
I feel underdressed, Mayor, but Scott looks so good. But anyways, this is a little bit past due recognition, but better late than never. On January 13th at 11:00 p.m., we had just changed to where we started operating two zones, where we split the city in two zones, literally 11 days before we had changed that. There was officers in the area of the Walmart and then officers in the area of Tika K Drive. We received a call for service at 11 o'clock that there was an armed robbery in progress at the McDonald's at Tika K and Gold Hill 160 and Tika K. So we responded. The officers here, literally a couple of them just out of the academy, responded and did an unbelievable, amazing job. And I've been in law enforcement for 23 years, and myself and the major we're talking, he's 24 years. Literally, in my 23 years, I've gone to murders that just occurred, different things, but a armed robbery in progress with subjects kidnapped inside the McDonald's is literally something that rarely ever occurs. So they came in from their zones, surrounded the area. As they surrounded the area, the armed robbery suspect walked out. He had two bags of cash and a gun in his hand. Officers addressed him. They were deciding, he was deciding whether he was going to drop his gun or go into a gunfight. Luckily, he decided for himself to drop the gun. But we also found out later that evening or prior that evening that he had robbed two places in Charlotte.
Oh, boy.
And had also kidnapped a couple of people in Charlotte and locked them in freezers. So I wanted to say that the supervisor, Josh Schmal, Josh, if you'd come up, go up to the mayor, he was supervising that day, and he did an outstanding job of leading them in and telling them what they needed to do. Josh Ectenaw was literally in training, so this was one of his first calls. So hopefully, we don't have too many like that, Josh. All right, Josh Gordon, and I think everybody on this shift's name is Josh.
That is hysterical.
And then we have one who is not a Josh, Billy Donahue. He's misplaced on this shift. But he also ended up arriving at the scene, and they did an outstanding job of taking this guy down without violence. And this is the way we want to see all of our calls outcome, but just an amazing job. Want to give them a round of applause.
Good job, fellas.
Stay safe, guys. It's an easy job till it isn't. Same with firefighters.
All the good stuff.
Beginning to think you were going to do the whole meeting up there, Mayor.
Getting my Fitbit steps in. Item number 3F on the agenda is the proclamation of Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas child abuse is a community problem, and finding solutions deepens on envi... excuse me, depends on involvement among people throughout the community. And whereas in fiscal year 2015, there were 18,848 children in founded investigations of child maltreatment in South Carolina. Whereas all citizens should be aware of the negative effects of child abuse, including physical, sexual, and emotional abuse, and neglect, and become involved in supporting parents to rear their children in a safe nurturing environment. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of the partnership created among social service agencies, schools, religions, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and business community. Now therefore, the mayor and the city council of Tika K do hereby proclaim April 2016 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Item number... Item number 3G on the agenda is the proclamation for Earth Day. Whereas forty-six years ago, millions of Americans celebrated the first day, first Earth Day in cities across our nation. And whereas having borne witness to years of environmental neglect, these ordinary citizens gathered in the streets and parks and on college campuses to demand change and commit to leaving a healthier planet for the next generation. And whereas this movement led to the creation of the Environmental Protection Agency and the passage of the Clean Air Act and the Clean Water Act and the Endangered Species Act, and ignited the spirit of stewardship that continues to drive us to meet the challenges of our time. And whereas we recognize the need to promote energy efficiency to remain a sustainable community, therefore encouraging the residents of Tegukay to develop everyday activities such as recycling, eliminating the use of foam products, and utilizing reusable grocery sacks in lieu of plastic. Now therefore, the mayor and the city council of Tegukay do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2016 as Earth Day and encourage all residents to participate in activities that will protect our environment and contribute to the health and sustainable future. With that in mind, the beautification committee, the volunteer beautification committee, will have a workday on Friday, April 22nd at eight AM, the Living Memorial Gardens. They are always looking for people to help in the gardens, so if you have the time to do so, celebrate Earth Day with the beautification committee. Thank you very much. Item number four, on the, 4A on the agenda is the second reading and ordinance annex 100% petition. MAP City Manager Charlie Funderberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As the mayor stated before you tonight, is proposed second reading of the Windhaven PDD. As council did give favorable reading on this last month, we would ask for a favorable second read at this time. For the record, I'll read out the tax map numbers. It would be TMS 646-0000-002, 004, 005, 006, 007, 013, 031, 644-0101-029, and a portion of 646-0000-018, and to rezone from RUD in the county to PDD in the city. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Charlie. Council entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance to annex by 100% petition. The tax map numbers that have been read into the record by the city manager and to rezone as PDD in the city.
I have a motion by Dottie Hersey, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jennifer Salford. Any council discussion? Ryan?
I mean, I think everybody has an idea of the way I feel. I think the staff has done an unbelievable job as far as from taking it from the original count down to where it is now, and Kent worked and Development Solution Group did a good job as far as for lowering their number and making it a good development. Personally, from the feedback that I've gotten from the citizens, whether it's fifteen or twenty emails and the conversations I've had, I feel it's a little irresponsible with a partial traffic study. Not a complete traffic study completed, finished, I'm not sure what the rush is. But I mean, again, good job to you guys for making it what it is. I think it's a great development, I think the staff did a great job. I just don't think now's the time to make it happen.
Thank you, Ryan, Jen?
We have discussed this a lot, and I see some new faces, and even after this past month, I think not everyone knows all the information about it. Not for a lack of trying to seek it. As this project has been evolving, like Ryan was saying, there have been changes, and I see a lot of positive improvements in it. Yeah, there's going to be no apartments, there'll be a maximum of four hundred homes. It'll be diversified so that we can have those patio homes for age-targeted residents that we need. We're restricting it so that there will be only two-car garages, there'll be no vinyl. We're going to get the twenty-acre park that we need. We're going to, we already have the letter in tent that they've shown us for the middle school site. That'll be thirty-four acres. They increased the quantity of acreage for the commercial, which we need. There's been a lot of improvements in this. They're also donating fifteen hundred dollars per home as a gift, with a minimum of four hundred thousand dollars that'll be used towards improving that park space that we will be getting, that we can see as we see fit. And Duke Power will have a certain portion that we're going to be restricted on, but this is greatly needed space for us. I just see a lot of positive things. The first home also will not be built until the construction projects are done. And this is going to be taking five to seven years for this entire project to be completed. Because there's patio homes, we're lessening our burden on our schools, our recreation, and also our roads. Because those average one car per residence. So I think this really is a smart way for us to grow.
Thank you, Jen. Dottie?
I agree with the comments on both sides from both Ryan and Jen. But there have been many citizens, some that are in this room tonight, some that aren't, who have also expressed their interest in seeing us approve this. We've heard a lot that, you know, we've got a lot of people that are opposed to it, but there have been, I'd say, an equal number. I didn't count people on both sides, but based on the internet traffic and so forth, I think that there is support for it. I think there have been a lot of improvements to the plan, as Jen has pointed out. And I do think that this is a responsible growth decision. I suspect, and I don't know this for fact, but I keep trying to think about why there is so much interest in this particular project over others, because there's certainly, Tegukay has grown and is growing, and there's been a ton of construction and growth and building over by Walmart, off a damn road, down on 160. And I haven't heard this much from citizens until this particular project. My only guess, and I could be completely wrong, but it's because it's viewed as being at the entrance to the city. And so therefore, people are more concerned because now it feels like it's closer to your backyard than if it's happening over in Lakewood, perhaps. I don't know that that's the reason. And I know there have been a lot of suggestions about moratoriums and suggestions about referendums and all of that. I just don't agree with those. I feel like you've elected us, and you haven't elected all of us, you may have voted for someone else, but some of you voted for some of us, or else we wouldn't be here. And we have a responsibility, as your city council representatives, to certainly listen to your concerns, hear the good, the bad, the ugly. And then we have a responsibility to understand the facts, to study them, to discuss them, and to put all of the pieces together and make a decision that is, in our view, as the elected officials, and certainly with Charlie and his team's expertise, to make a decision. Everything doesn't have to go into a referendum, or why do you need us at all? So I think that we are going to make a decision, I think I have a sense of how it's going to go. And I think we do the best we can. I think that there's going to be growth, whether we approve this or not, it is going to happen, that's my perspective. I do think, as I said at the prior meeting, that it will enhance the entrance to our city, if you will. And I do think that we want to build and preserve, but build smartly for ourselves, and as they say, for our prosperity, our prosterity, you know, for others that are going to come. Many of us want our families to be here. Many of us want to be here forever, and we want to move into patio homes and so forth and so on. So I mean, I think it is what it is, I think having a school, another school, which again, doesn't benefit me at all, since I don't have children in school. But we all know that when people come to buy homes, they love to have the school close to where they live. We don't want our children bus far. Well, this is certainly not far. So for all of those reasons, I think that we have entertained everybody's thoughts. We have investigated, we have evaluated, and will draw our conclusions tonight. And I just hope that it is the success that many of us think it will be. And for those that are naysayers, I hope a couple of years from now, you say, hey, you know what, that's not so bad. We have a couple of places to shop and dine and so forth and so on that we didn't have before. Maybe you won't, but we can't please all the people all the time, so I guess we'll do the best we can and hope for your support, as you've been so good at supporting us with other decisions that we've made for the city.
Thank you, Dottie. David?
Well, I appreciate the community involvement here. I've got many, many emails, I hope I returned your emails promptly, and the phone calls, and people who've stopped me on the street, in the stores, and I've listened to every one of you. And some of you are very adamant on how you feel, and I appreciate that. But either way, it turns out tonight, just know that everybody up here really, really took into consideration what you guys wanted and what we thought was the best for the community.
Thank you, David. I just want to mention one more thing. All of council has received an email from the developer, and he mentioned in his email to the developer that he feels that he will probably get somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred and fifty homes. Not the seven forty that was originally out there with the five hundred and twenty-five apartments, or the number that we're talking, we were talking about last week with four hundred homes. So hopefully, we can keep that number between two hundred and fifty and four hundred homes. There's a lot of, there has been a lot of conversation that has gone on. There are a lot of secret, closed Facebook pages that are out there that I've had friends of mine who are on them send me those pages. And to be perfectly honest with you, if my mother, God rest her soul, read those comments about me, she'd hate me too. So you know, if you have the courage to post those things, please feel free to post them where everyone can read them and not just have your secret group. The other comments that have come out, you know, there was a Clemson study that was out there in 2006, and it did an analysis of the city of York. We've contacted the city of York and we've asked them about the Clemson study. The Clemson study was about two developments that they were talking about, which were low to moderate income homes, and they were talking about homes between a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I don't think the homes that we're talking about at Windhaven are that dollar amount. I think they're probably upward of two fifty to three hundred thousand dollar homes, depending upon who it was. And they also mentioned that a lot of the numbers that the Clemson folks used in their study were incorrect. They talked about the trash and the recycled numbers not being correct. They talked about the police department numbers not being correct. The amount of city staff that would have been needed were incorrect. And you know, I've even taken that study to the municipal association down in South Carolina and asked them, and their response was, it's a good study, it's not correct, but it's a good study. And that information I've shared with council. So you know, I think it's a good project, it has met our comprehensive plan, which we've worked on and we've spent a lot of money for that comprehensive plan. And besides it being something that fits into the comprehensive plan, our planning commission, who are citizens of the city of Tegukay, volunteers, reviewed this plan and passed it unanimously, that they think the council should move forward with the plan. So those are my comments. Council, if it would be okay with you, I'd like to open it up to public comments. If anyone has anything they want to say about the Windhaven project, please step to the microphone and state your name and address, and then you have your three minutes.
Hi, my name is Mary Johnson, and I just recently moved about a mile outside of Tegukay. But I'm just curious if there is a map showing of like where the school would be, where the parks would be, and things of that nature.
It's all online, I think that website is WindhavenTegukay.com.
You can go to that one or to the city's main website, and on the left-hand side, you'll see Growth Impacts, Area Developments. And just click on that, and you'll see a tab for Windhaven. And it will show you, it will also show you the site plan that shows where the park would be, where the, where the middle school would be, and where the homes and the commercial areas would be. Yes, ma'am?
We do have family in Tegukay, so I spend more time here than I do outside. But the new development will back up to our home. And so that's why I was wondering kind of where things were going to be, thank you.
Thank you.
And there is a map over, on the floor over there, if you want to take a look at it or what have you. They've built developers over there with that.
My name is Chuck Reitz, I live in Shoreline. I have just one question. You said that the traffic study is not complete. When will it be completed?
On any development that a TIA or Traffic Improvements Analysis is required, like this one, it has to be submitted prior to us getting the preliminary plats. That way, we can make sure that whatever the traffic engineer has said, as far as any types of improvements that may be necessary and whatnot, we can make sure that those are in place or at least designed as part of the preliminary plats. And that's with any development, it's not just specific to this Windhaven development. They've, they've pretty, put a pretty big dent in it thus far. I think they're probably further along with it at this point in time in the game than what you typically see. And the portion that we've got, we've received thus far has been shared with council, but it is, it is not completed yet, but will be completed in the coming weeks, coming months, as they continue to finalize their analysis.
Before, before construction?
Oh, absolutely. It absolutely has to come in before construction.
And the developer has to pay for those required improvements?
Charlie, that brings a question for me. Can you explain to the audience at home and the audience here what the process is? We're not, we're not annexing this piece of property and tomorrow they're going to start putting homes up. You know, explain that, you know, what we're doing right now is we're annexing the property into the city. The hundred and twenty-two plus or minus acres, we're annexing that into the city.
Correct.
What's the process tomorrow, what happens?
Well, there's several things that staff has to do administratively that Susan Britt handles for us as far as notifying, obviously, school district, the Department of Justice, York County, things like that, to adjust Tegukay's territory, so to speak. The developer is already working on, and we can talk specific about this one, but it's really applies to any development as we bring it in. The next, the next thing that we would get, and mainly because of the size of this one, would be the TIA and preliminary plats. Those are reviewed by our technical team with the city as well, and then they go on to planning commission. Now that technical team consists of cities engineer, the utility director, Susan Britt, our planner, our operations director, are all in the room same time, reviewing all the plans, the grading plans, the, your preliminary plat for the entire development. Once the grading plan, excuse me, once the grading plan is approved by the city and they've gotten their preliminary plats, then they can, then they begin the grading process. You're talking a good length of time, this isn't something that just happens in thirty days, forty-five days, that type thing. Especially a development that is of this size. So I would imagine, and obviously would defer to the developer who's here this evening, but more than likely, they start pushing dirt. Maybe late this year, but more than likely, they're in 2017 pushing dirt. They've got to start getting their infrastructure in, the roads, stormwater pipes, water lines, sewer lines, things like that, before the water lines can be placed in operation. You've got to get permits from DHEC because they've got to be tested and things like, and it's, it is a time-consuming process, most certainly. And then he's got to come back for final plats. This developer, unlike Cameron Creek, he is a developer that will be, it's more similar to the Lakewood project, where you've got an entity that's putting in the infrastructure and getting the building pads ready, and then selling off those building pads to the builders that will come in and buy up lots from them and actually construct the homes. They, as part of that development, will have to abide by the PDD standards if council approves moving forward with us tonight. That final plat, yeah, you're probably getting, we're probably looking to approve final plats in probably late seventeen, and then he'll sell off those, and then we start getting home permits. Based on construction cycles, typically you don't see a whole lot in the wintertime. Of course, this winter was pretty mild, so things didn't really slow down a whole lot. But that's kind of how it takes. So I mean, you're looking at a year from now, he's pushing, you know, he's pushing dirt, getting roadway and infrastructure in and continuing that process. And then we'll start getting the building pads ready and things like that. So that's, it is a very time-consuming process, the larger the development, the more time that it takes.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Yes, sir?
Real quick, I got something.
Real quick, I got something. And not to be funny or anything, but I know we talked about, what, Kent, July 18 going vertical?
First quarter of '18 would be our goal.
Okay, because I remember July, and my comment was going to be, I'd like to bet a beer with somebody whether it would be before that or not. What's a month, Kent? Let's pick a month.
I'll pick a month of, I'll pick a month of April, the first building, first home construction completed is April of '18.
And when are we going up?
We're going vertical there, and if we don't...
April 2018, if it's before that, you owe me a beer. Okay.
Yeah, my name is Larry Franklin, live in Cascading Pines Drive. Excuse me. If and when this particular PDD gets approved, is there any other parcels of land that's out there that's conforming to the comprehensive plan, or is this it for this particular comprehensive plan, and then we wait for whatever the next comprehensive plan is for that 10-year period? Or do there still some options out there for us to continue to annex practical pieces of property to add to the city?
South Carolina annexation laws do limit how a city or how a municipality can annex. There's very few additional parcels of land that are adjoining Tegucay or contiguous to Tegucay for those annexation opportunities without having a already developed neighborhood like a Palmetto Plantation or Palmetto West or even Waterstone or, believe it or not, we're actually adjacent to Baxter Village as well. To be able to annex things that are already developed usually are slim to none. You don't see it a lot. We've got very few parcels adjacent to the city with this particular PDD. There's at least two more parcels that the developer is in negotiations with, hopefully being able to come back at some point and amend the PDD, just for, if nothing else, to be able to further extend Hubert Graham Way. There's your other quote-unquote annexation possibilities for the city of Tegucay as far as undeveloped land is in the Dam Road, Gardendale Road District off of Highway 160. Outside of that, I mean, we're really slammed up against all the developments that have occurred in the county over the last several years, so we probably know what the footprint of Tegucay is going to be for the vast foreseeable future, probably over the next two to three years. Yeah, based on the way the housing market and the construction market looks now. So does that mean that, and we have targeted those areas or at least identified those areas in our existing comp plan that was approved last year? Yeah, so that is our 10-year guide, so to speak, as we continue to move forward with the city. Doesn't mean that they absolutely have to be annexed. Yeah, they may develop in the county, but we don't have to, we'll look to update the comprehensive plan. We'll probably start that process in 2018, 2019, because we look to revise it every five years. So with it being approved in 2015, we'll start that work in, you know, late '18, going into '19, and hopefully have it before council at some point in time in 2020 to continue to update that plan as we move forward.
Linda Stevenson, Point Clear Drive. I just would like to know that five of you made a decision that a referendum was not called for. Did you receive a lot of requests for a referendum since this affects all the citizens of Tegucay and not just five of you?
I didn't receive one. Not one request.
I read it someplace. I'm not sure where I read it, but I read it somewhere. Might have been in the newspaper. I don't know. But no, I didn't get any personal request.
I didn't get any personal request for a referendum.
Yeah, we heard like votes on Facebook and things of that sort.
Maybe that's where it came from.
I think, I think what Dottie talked about earlier as far as the interest in this community versus previous ones, in the last election cycle when Dave and I were voted in, one of the biggest feedbacks from the citizens of Tegucay was about transparency and city government being open and speaking to the citizens. And I think this council as a whole has made leaps and bounds as far as, as well as city staff, to really pushing information out there with the addition of different Facebook pages and just trying to get the information out. And in previous developments, I think it was, the citizens were just less informed, whereas, you know, council may have known the specifics of each and every individual one, whereas now, because everybody is looking and the city's really pushing that information, I think that, to answer your question earlier about why there's so much more voice and opinion, I think that has a lot to do with it, because now a lot more people are focused and listening because of staff and the way they're getting the information out. But to answer your question, Ms. Linda, aside from somebody saying, "We're vote, we're getting your opinions on the signed ordinance and we're not getting your opinions on Windhaven," would I have liked to seen something besides the one that went out, the, who did that? Frank McCollum, I believe, sent one out a couple of weeks ago or a month ago with voting the yays or nays, and the petition to stop Windhaven, I guess, is what it was. Aside from that, we hadn't seen a whole lot interaction aside from the phone calls and, you know, the emails that we mentioned earlier, but specifically for a referendum, I agree with these. I haven't gotten anything besides, why don't we have a survey on Facebook, not so much a referendum on the, on the actual development?
Any other public comments?
I'm going to run before I get cut off again. I'm Paula Murphy. I live in Palmetto West on Zimmerman Drive. My concern to you is with respect to the traffic study and the roads, if there has been a focus at all with regard to our nuclear facility that's so close to us, should we have a disaster? If the road study will take into account a way for us to vacate this area, for, as a citizen, I know how difficult it is for me to come out of Palmetto West and move left, or, excuse me, turn left. There's just not a lot of infrastructure for the amount of growth that's going on here. And should, God forbid, there be something that happens to that nuclear facility, I'm really concerned about all the residents of Tegucay being able to safely, to get out for their safety, for all of us and children and elderly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to make one more statement. You know, when Lake Shore was developed, and I hear horror stories of when the trees were all taken down, and it was a Saturday morning, and it was like a Holocaust that happened. Lake Shore was developed, and there was a divide in the city. There was, you know, the traditional Tegucay, and there was those who considered themselves not part of Tegucay. They said that they lived in Lake Shore, in Lake Shore, South Carolina, which doesn't exist as far as I know. You know, but they use the same zip code and everything. I thought about, I've thought about this a lot. If the city did not get involved in Lake Shore, if the city did not work with Newland for the development of Lake Shore, if the city had not gotten the infrastructure and the water and sewer in Lake Shore that we have now, there would be no way the city would have been able to purchase Utilities Inc. Because if you look at the bond for Utilities Inc., it is connected to the Lake Shore system. That's why they're TCUD 1 and TCUD 2. So the question, does growth pay for itself? In that instance, I think so. In that instance, I think it did. So are there any further public comments? Yes, sir.
John Sherwood, Tap A Place.
Somewhere.
I almost said Water Trace, whatever. You know, there's been a lot of energy around this, positive and negative energy on both sides of this, and I'm going to say, I think everybody did a fabulous job so far, really digging in, causing, causing the city to look a little deeper in justification, as probing questions from, from the committee. I think that's great, and I haven't, unfortunately, I missed the presentation, the first 15 minutes of the presentation when Kent did it, and, but everybody said it was a nice presentation, and I appreciate you working with us on everything. You know, growth is coming, guys. I mean, it's, is it now? Is it later? Is it going to be Kent, somebody else? You know, whatever. Full disclosure, I have the property next to it, so I potentially will benefit from it, but I'm going to, the idea of buying the property was to potentially benefit from future development, so, so good call. But, you know, the questions that I think that are open, that I don't understand at this point are, to the female's point with, from Zimmerman Road, the Zorr connector in the back to kind of open up, give us that other opportunity, did we get an update on that since the last, you know, month ago or whatever it was that we had? And I think we had an LOI or something from the school district, but, you know, in the contract world, you know, intent is kind of nifty. I mean, I've sold or almost sold a bunch of houses in my life, you know, and almost bought a few, but at the end, they didn't happen. So just what happens with that dirt? You know, if, for example, a deal is not struck with Fort Mill School District, it has other uses. We say 250, school pulls out, now we have, you know, quadplexes going in and something else. What does that do to the traffic study and, you know, have we addressed that? Those are my only questions. Thanks.
That, the property for the school is owned, a government institutional, so it can't be built on unless a previous council or next council changes it. So if it gets built, if, when it gets annexed into the city, it'll be annexed as government and institutional.
But that's a qualified use.
Correct.
The quadplex is actually...
Right. And I asked Kent, and he said that, and maybe Kent could come up and speak to this, but, so it's not hearsay.
Yeah.
But he had told me that there, it will not be an increase in homes.
Kent Olson, Development Solutions Group. We are bound by 400 units, negotiated down from 740 down to four, a maximum of 400. Today, we're working in earnest to get a contract completed with the school. You're right, LOIs don't always lead to fruition, but in this case, LOIs with a government body like the school system is a lot different than a, me, a speculative deal, going to speak to somebody about buying land and possibly getting a home, as you alluded to. So we feel very, very confident that the major deal points have been negotiated, and we're very close to getting the contract done. Dr. Epps has been out of the country for some time, so they're on their way back, as I understand it's, we'll be finishing that up shortly. But we're bound by 400 units. If and or but, no matter what happens out there, if for some reason the school system goes away, which would be very disappointing but not foreseen, we're bound to no more than 400 units. Today, on our initial site plan work with the school's site in place, we're at less than 250 units. No quadplexes, no apartments, no vinyl. The townhomes are required to have two-car garages, and we have a minimum of $400,000 commitment to the funding of the development of the park. In respect to the TIA, it's a pretty intense TIA, but the TIA is not complete, will be complete shortly. We will be bound by those recommendations. Staff, planning staff, will be involved in that also to make sure that they are on board with those recommendations. They're not going to issue any permits or whatnot until they're satisfied with that process. And again, going back to our earlier comments earlier, we would have never proposed this if we didn't feel that the road improvements are already planned for and funded for this area. We're going to be in place before, either done or even accounting for possible delays, close to being done before we build the first house. And also, we're not opening a box and dumping 400 houses overnight. That's a long process. We've probably got a recession, I hate to say it, but somewhere between today and when the last home was delivered in Windhaven, and where the first, or the last retail component is complete, we've probably got a recession, hopefully a minor one. Our industry has a great way of taking care of itself. It gets heated up, it slows down. But realistically, that is a five- to seven-year process before this is all done. So the hope being that we put the focus on where people in my industry feel badly it needs to be put on, that is roads. We all will agree that we need roads. I think we can also agree that we don't want to stop people's ability to make a living and to be known as an exclusive community that doesn't allow people to come in, just as y'all were able to come in and move into the community. I would hope that we would all want to be an inclusive community, but we do it in a smart manner. And I think that by having a community that's going to take five to seven years to grow out, give it time for improvements that we know of to get complete, to other improvements that are coming to be completed, I think is a smart way to have smart growth. Infrastructure-wise, for the city of Tegucay, it's not spread out like Lake Shore. We have fewer linear feet of infrastructure that are going to need to be after the developer pays for it, given to the city. A whole lot less linear feet of roads to be maintained, a whole lot linear, less linear feet of sewer to be maintained. So that's getting to the smart development. And ideally, to Dottie's point earlier, we want to have a hand in what happens there. We know growth is going to happen. This gives the city an opportunity to have a hand in what happens, have control over what happens there. Had they not done this, we'd been successful going another route. I wouldn't have done it. I live in the area, but it could have been a vinyl village. It could have been a quadplexes, apartments or whatnot. Who knows? Now you know. You have documents that, I get hit by a train tomorrow, you got documents that are going to control what's going to happen to this community. And most importantly, it fits your comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan is not just a, gosh, I'd like to have some of this, some of that. There's a, these folks can speak to it better than I can. There is a lot of, besides energy and man hours, a tremendous amount of money spent on a comprehensive plan to help control the city's growth. And that plan is a very recent plan, and this fits it not only to a T, but it also takes into consideration, it fits the comprehensive plan, but it also takes into consideration the concerns of today's environment. Yeah, we do have some growth concerns, and it takes that in consideration by taking it from 740 units down to 400 or less. But guys, we all got to focus on roads. We got to fight to get our fair money from the federal level to get our road money. We got to fight harder to get our money from the state level for roads. We got to expand pennies for progress for roads.
Thank you, Kent.
Thank you.
Should we elect him, or are you running for office?
Kent did give us an update regarding the Zorr Road access, all of us. And if I remember correctly, one of the families had a death, and I believe it's tied up in probate. So that is a long process for that particular parcel. And the other one has a very ill person, and that is where their priority is, their family right now. So I believe it was towards the end of this year that it would probably be picking up speed on determining what would happen with those two. However, as it is already existing, there's three, or maybe it was four, other ways that they will be able to access or get out of that area. And one will be at a controlled light. So even without the Zorr Road immediately, then they'll have other ways of getting out through other subdivisions. They have stub ups.
Any other public comments?
Oh, actually, there was one more thing. Sorry. I was talking, I was going to be addressing Paula. You had mentioned about, we received from Charlie Funderburk, the South Carolina Department of Transportation numbers, which showed how after the improvements for the road construction will be, how those numbers will significantly, and that's with knowing the growth that is going to be happening, how it is significantly decreasing the times that you'll be waiting at those lights and moving through traffic through. Is that something that you can post on to the city website? I know you sent it to all of us.
Yes, ma'am. We can, we can get that done tomorrow.
That would be great. Thank you.
A motion on the floor by Dottie Hershey. I have a second by Jen Stalford. Call the question. All in favor, saying with saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Nope.
Ms. O'Neil and Mr. Richard voted no. Item number 4B on the agenda on...
Mr. Mayor, before you go forward, so just for some people, because people ask me before the meeting, do we need a unanimous vote?
No.
And so I'm just, want to make sure that people that are here or that are watching understand that the motion carried.
Yes, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 4B on the agenda is unfinished business, the second reading of an ordinance to establish the CSE's Code of Laws. City manager Charlie Funderburk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, tonight, you've got before you, propose second reading of an ordinance to amend a section of the city's Code of Laws to establish the Parks, Recreation and Tourism Commission. The section of the code is Chapter 2, Article 4, Division 2, to be specific. Basically, it's taking the section that created the Community Relations Committee as it stands today and reorganizing that to hopefully be able to allow more folks to get involved, restructure and streamline some things. We would ask for council's favorable consideration at this time.
Thank you, Charlie. Council entertain a motion?
Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Article 4, Division 2 of the city's Code of Laws in order to establish the Parks, Recreation and Tourism Commission.
I have a motion by Dottie Hershey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Ryan Richard. Any council discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor saying, we're saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number five A on the agenda is new business. It's a joint agreement between the Fort Mill School District and Tika K Elementary School Athletic Fields. City Manager Charlie Funderburke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, um, the school district, uh, staff reached out to us, um, a few months ago, wanting to put together, uh, joint use agreements. Uh, they didn't want to do one blanket for all of the fields, um, that are utilized by us or Town of Fort Mill. Uh, they asked to do it site specific. Uh, because Tika K Elementary's, uh, athletic fields are a little different, um, just in what we're doing out there and what they, what they do. Typically, our, uh, our field usage is over to middle school, where the school districts paint a lot of maintenance into those fields and things of that nature because it supports their middle school athletics. Well, uh, anybody that's raised an elementary school child knows that they don't have school sports. Uh, but the school district did create those ball fields. Um, they use them for PE and things of that nature, but, um, our recreation, um, uh, programs use them more, uh, probably than anyone. They are now starting to get more and more requests from private entities, uh, club teams, things of that nature for their facilities, and wanted to put together, uh, joint use agreements. This is the, uh, the first one of them. Uh, I believe they're also working with Town of Fort Mill on, on, uh, similar paths, uh, for fields that they use. So, uh, this joint use agreement has been, uh, reviewed by myself, uh, the Parks Recreation Staff, as well as your city attorney. Fort Mill, uh, School District is, uh, putting it up, uh, for approval tomorrow night, uh, during their, uh, April meeting. Uh, we would ask for, uh, council's favorable consideration.
Thank you, Charlie. Jen, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, members of council, motion to approve the joint use agreement with Fort Mill School District for Tika K Elementary School Athletic Fields and authorize the city manager to execute said agreement.
I have a motion by Jennifer Stalford. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David O'Neil. Um, any council discussion? I just have one question. Um, page four of five, um, seven A, it talks about Fort Mill School Board Policy KF. What is that?
Which paragraph?
Um, sorry, seven A.
Seven A. Fort Mill Board Policy KF.
Yeah, what is that?
That is their rate schedule, uh, that they approved.
Okay.
For their, they approved that, I believe, uh, last spring, uh, before the start of this school year. Uh, and it just sets, uh, facility rental rates for, they've got different rates depending on which, which facility is, whether it's, uh, you know, the gymnasium or, yeah, the football field at the high school versus an athletic field, yeah, at an elementary school.
Okay. Any other questions from council? There being none, call the question. All in favor saying, we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Item number five B on the agenda is the discussion regarding the fire station two with the Stonecrest, within the Stonecrest development. City Manager Charlie Funderburke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, before I get into my portion of the presentation, I'm actually going to, uh, ask Chief Samansky, um, to come up to the podium. He's got a couple of things that he would like to talk through, uh, in regards to this. Um, and then I'll get into, um, some more specific details in regard to that, that station itself.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Muchas gracias. Again, Chief Scott Samansky, and I also have, uh, volunteer division chief Les Woods with me. We're both going to present a few things for you. And, um, I'll go over the calls and then we'll, uh, let, let's take over and then I'll close. And if you have any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer. All right, as you can see, my, our handout, our call volume in two thousand and thirteen was a total of two fifty-eight. We had a, a few accidents for around eleven, uh, two medical calls and two hundred and forty-six fire calls. Fire calls being alarms, grass fire, grill fires, just everything, a couple of house fires. Okay? Then you jump up into two thousand and fourteen, we have three hundred and thirteen calls. So as you can see, we increase every year, and, you know, obviously it's from growth. And, um, medical calls up twelve, um, to twelve and two to twelve, and MVAs went down from eleven to six. Okay, and then in two thousand and fifteen, we had five hundred and sixty-one calls. Okay, thirty-two medical calls.
Wow.
Five hundred and sixteen fire calls and thirteen MVAs. And we do not go to one sixteen Gold Hill at this time. These are outside of that quarter. If we ever take over that, uh, MVA calls will probably be over a hundred plus, at least. Okay? As you can see, our medical calls are going up quite a bit. And if you take, uh, from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and fifteen, our calls have increased a hundred percent. So that shows why we need our paid fire staff. Okay? And we're going to discuss speed of fire and, uh, response time and benefits the, uh, newer areas of the city. I got the clicker in my pocket here.
Chief, you don't do motor vehicle accidents at Gold Hill and one sixty, but you do answer fire calls.
Yes.
Over on, I mean, all of Tika K at Lake Ridge.
All the way down.
Yep.
We go all the way to seventy-seven. Sometimes if it's big enough, we'll go across seventy-seven, and same thing, we'll go to Carol wins, uh, Hamilton Road out there.
Okay.
Which is right where Black and Decker intersects Pleasant Road.
About what percent of all your calls are through the mutual aid agreement?
I would say thirty percent. It's a, it's a good, good number.
Yeah.
Where are we doing our mutual aid? In fact, I have a meeting on Monday. We're going to take that in, and I'll explain that later.
Okay, thank you.
Before we get right into it, we really need to have all of our residents understand the speed of fire because it's critical to us being able to be successful to rescue somebody and reduce property damage. And there has been a series of demonstrations done across the state of South Carolina. Very happy to say, one of those was done right here in the parking lot of the Glennon Center, uh, several years ago. And there was also one down in, in Fort Mill, where they construct two eight by eight by eight buildings, put furniture in there, have a wastebasket with newspaper, and light it on fire. The first wisps of smoke start a time clock, and people don't understand how fast a fire will grow. At two and a half minutes consistently across all the demonstrations across the state, consistently, two and a half minutes, that wisps of smoke from a wastebasket has turned into flashover conditions, flames blowing out the front of that room. You don't have time to get out. You have to, as soon as that smoke alarm goes off, you have to get out and stay out. So to put this in perspective, when you do have your smoke alarm go off, go off, when that wisps of smoke comes out of the wastebasket, you gather your family together, you follow your escape plan, and you go to your meeting place. That's about one minute. You get on a phone, you call the nine eleven dispatcher, they gather information, put it in their computer, that's a second minute. Then they transfer that to the outbound dispatcher, who in turn is going to set off our pagers and our radios. That's a third minute. Keep in mind, I just said, it goes to flashover conditions unsustainable to life in two and a half. When we first get notified, in the best of circumstances, which is a fire in a home, that room could already be in total flashover conditions. So now the clock starts ticking for us to get there. It'll take the paid staff about another minute to get to the truck, to get on their gear, and to start rolling out the door. Somehow we're talking four minutes. So that brings us to, um, response time. Response time based on our actual call volume over the last year, if, if you try and go from our current station to the Walmart, Wellmore area, it's about nine minutes. That's road time.
Yeah.
That's not the first four minutes we just talked about. If you live down in Lake Ridge, it's closer to twelve minutes. All depends on weather conditions, traffic, which can be really tough. Now, Hubert Graham Way is going to help, it's going to help a lot, but, uh, it's still going to be a long, long response time. So what's the benefits to the newer areas of Tika K? We estimate when we house that station with paid staff, our over the road time is going to be cut down in the Stonecrest and Lake Ridge areas, two to five minutes instead of nine to twelve. That results in saving lives, reducing injuries, and reducing property damage. There are benefits to traditional Tika K as well. When we get an alarm or a fire in traditional Tika K, we automatically, on the first alarm, automatically request mutual aid from Flint Hill. By having station number two in place, it'll reduce the time it takes to get a second engine in, a second crew, by about six minutes. And that is critical. We staff our initial paid crew of three members. You can only do so much with three people. In fact, the state has a two in, two out rule. So we need to get a second engine on scene as quick as possible. So traditional Tika K will also benefit significantly by about six minutes sooner to get a second engine on, on site. Then we come to expanding our volunteer staff. I'm saddened to say, there isn't a single volunteer in our fire department living in the Lake Ridge, Stonecrest community. Why? Because it takes them about fifteen minutes, best case, to go from their home to our current station. At that point, you know, all the trucks are gone. I am com- confident, uh, that with a second station and two pieces of apparatus in there, the paid staff will take one, and the volunteers that will now be volunteering from that area will be happy to go to the station, take that second piece of apparatus and get it on the road. So I'm, I'm very confident that this will build a momentum of increasing our volunteer staff and better serving the community. I'd like to turn it back to the chief.
I'll stay there.
Yeah.
Out on my pay grade. As I explained to you earlier, with our calls on EMS is increasing. So we have, I've talked to Charlie, we've taken the steps, and we are in, um, training for EMTs. We, we're lucky to have three EMTs online now. We do not get dispatched first unless the ambulance is out, out of the city. And it happened today at, uh, four thirty. As I was driving out, pager went off, and we were called EMS and the ambulance was coming in. And it was right down the street from the, from the fire station, so we were first on scene again. So what we're doing is we're training, we've got to have six guys on staff, one per shift, and then we'll be dispatched first. We're not going to transport anybody, but we're going to get there first. We have one ambulance in the city, and that ambulance serves a, a big area. Okay, so if we can get our guys trained and we can get there, um, and it's happened before, we can save a life. CPR, get things going a lot quicker, call for a helicopter if we need it, and get everything prepped by the time EMS gets there, um, with their advanced life savings support. It'll be a big asset to the city. A lot of York Co-, York County Fire Department's going to it, um, but we're going to be one of the first to take the step to do it. We've already got, like I said, three or four guys, two guys signed up for it. We're going to hire another part-time, so hopefully August, September, we'll be able to be dispatched. And now, not only are we here, but there's now an ambulance over in the Stonecrest. So all those people in, uh, Lake Ridge, Stonecrest area, Gardendale, our guys will be able to leave that station and go there for EMS calls too, and get the same service that we get traditionally with TK. And, um, we're real proud of that. Um, above and beyond, it's not going to cost the city a lot of money for us to do this. We're already affording to do this out of our budget. Piedmont, we're, uh, partnering up with them. They're going to be the medical observers of all of it. They'll be our, uh, they'll sign off on everything we do. Basically looking at about, uh, three thousand dollars a person to get them up to speed and to run calls, and another three thousand dollars worth of equipment, initial investment. And then after that, except for oxygen, Piedmont will replenish everything for free. So it's a win-win situation for the city of TK.
It's great.
For us people that are going to be in those patio homes. So the, the new station's going to do a lot for us. I mean, it's going to, it's going to keep us with our ISO rating, because right now they want four out per truck. First truck out, four people. With staffing the new station and the station we have now, we put now five guys, I've already talked to ISO, and it's five guys, initial call, two different apparatus. He said that that'll be fine. They'll keep our ISO and, uh, approve to, uh, help us get our one that we're all striving for. Hopefully, we get a one in another year and a half, eighteen months, two years.
Great.
So, any questions? No? Okay.
The, the, um, current station we have, who owns that?
The volunteers own it. It's deeded to the Volunteer, TK Volunteer Fire Department. They're a five oh one C three. Though it's, it's deeded to be a fire station forever.
And there's no intent, and I guess, Charlie, this is more of a question for you as well, um, to close that station?
No, because what we'd be doing.
It's the opposite.
Right.
Be the opposite almost.
Right.
The new station will be central located. Okay, and it's five road miles for ISO right now.
Okay.
But it used to be six miles, so who's not to say in another year or two, it's going to be four miles? That new station will be, everything will be within three point two miles.
Okay.
Okay, but, but there's no sense in not staffing that station.
Okay.
I mean, this has been, for me, this has been something I've talked about since the first day I was elected to council and, you know, I mean, I figure, we have to figure out how to fund the building of it, but we have citizens in that part of Tika K, and they deserve the same level of service that we get in this part of Tika K. I mean, health and safety should be job one for us as council, as a city. Um, it certainly is for you, I know. So, uh, we appreciate the information, and it's about time we do this, from my perspective.
I have a question on the mutual aid. Uh, what's the closest other fire station that this one's going to be? Is it going to be Tika K still is going to be the closest, or is there a county, uh?
No, the new station will be our closest station.
Uh, maybe I'm asking the question wrong. Um.
Right now, we mutually with two different departments, really three, but two on, um, traditional TK, Flint Hill has a station on Pleasant Road.
Yep.
And they back us up.
Right.
And then on the other side of TK, um, from, from, uh, Peachtree apartment, not Peachtree, Palamino Apartments, all the way back to New Gray Rock Road, Riverview backs us up.
Who, who would normally be responsible for like the Brayden area and all those apartments right there on one sixty?
Um, it's really funny how they do that. It's a good question. They split that road down the middle. On the right side of Brayden ten is Riverview. On the left side is Flint Hill.
So those will be county departments? They're not going to be the city?
County departments.
Is there any plans for the county to put another fire station around there anywhere? I mean, it seems like now we're, and I, I don't mean to ask this wrong, I'm a big fan of the, of the fire department, but is, are we going to be Brayden's fire department now? I mean, we're going to be across the street from them.
We'll be first on scene. There's no doubt about it.
But we will not be primary because it's outside the ci-
It's outside the city.
Right.
We won't be toned out first.
Well, what does that mean, toned out? What's the time from it gets toned out to, uh, somebody in the county till it comes to you guys?
At the same time.
Well, I mean, so you're going to, you're still going to beat them there by ten minutes?
On S-, Flint Hill side, yes.
So there's, when I, I guess what I'm asking, there's no incentive for the, for the, the county to do their, to take over their responsibility to, to have a fire department there if we're doing it for them? Are we, are, is there any chance that we'll ever get reimbursed for anything like that?
Um, we've, we've met with the county and we've met with, um, the county manager, and at this time, he has told us no.
Well, I don't blame him. I wouldn't either. I mean, if you're getting it for free, why pay for it?
Um, they, the way they look at it is their county stations are responding to us and bring, and give us our mutual aid, and we don't pay for that. So it's a give and take. One year, we might go twenty calls to them, and they might come to us fifteen calls.
I mean, I, I, I understand that concept. I think the reality might be different. I'm, I'm not saying I'm against the fire depart, the, the fire station. I'm just thinking outside the box, I guess.
What we need is everybody in this room is to call Mr. Shanahan and ask him why they're not working with us. Bottom line. Okay?
I mean, our people deserve a fire station. I'm not saying that. We're going to, we're going to make sure our people get taken care of.
Right.
But I just think they're, they're seeing what we're doing, and they're going to say, we don't need a fire station. Now, Tika K's got it for us.
They're going to build a fire station at the Sonic.
Oh, they are going to build a fire station at the Sonic. They already have a, a lean to kind of thing.
They have a lean to behind Eddie Evans type service.
Yeah.
It's Riverview's second station.
Second station.
Has a wood truck in it, excuse me.
And manned all the time?
No.
Oh, it's volunteers?
And they're going to build another station by Sonic, and it's not going to be manned. And most people don't know that the reason they're building that station is because Vineyard and- and all that.
Talk about wasting money, building something, build it and they will come, I don't know if that's going to happen, but...
Well, we got to do that. We used to have a road on the...
Can't lose.
In TK that went through the Vineyard. And TK had a contract with the county for fifteen hundred dollars a year, thirty years ago, and TK asked for twenty-five hundred, and Riverview took it over, and we shut the road off.
So the people, the firemen that are going to house, that are going to be stationed at the new station, are they already employed, and they're living at the new station now? We've already got them ready to go, or is this going to be an additional hire?
We'll have to hire additional people, but right now, we're short one person, we hire that person, then we'll have to get a couple more. And we're going to break it up three and two, and if the call volume increased, then we'll add another one.
So what do you foresee is our manpower numbers for fires, the fire department, when this is built, total for both stations, and for, is it going to be manned twenty-four-seven?
Twenty-four-seven, yes.
So that's just one four-man crew, twelve on, twelve off?
We'll have a three-man, we'll have a three-man crew and a two-man crew initially.
Oh, I see.
That'll be, so you're looking at A, B, and C shift, you'll have fifteen people, fifteen firefighters.
At all total?
Total, across the board.
Plus the chief. Because you work all the time, you're twenty-four-seven.
Yes. We need to talk about that.
You good?
Yes.
I was curious, actually, about the ISO rating. Some people have said that obviously safety is a reason to improve your ISO ratings directly related to it. But some people have said, well, Jennifer, I haven't seen that improvement in my homeowner's insurance rates, like you guys said that we'll be seeing. And I don't know the answer to that.
The answer to that is very simple. If their insurance company does not subscribe to the ISO...
Won't be a change.
Then there won't be any changes. If, there's so many things, ISO is just part of it, and that's what the basis, and then also, they, the insurance company might not pay for that information, so they don't get it, like a Nationwide or someone like that, or a little company.
You're the expert, for sure.
Being forty-plus years in the insurance side, every carrier makes their own rules. There are some personal lines, insurance companies that don't offer any credit, but most do. It might be five percent, it might be ten percent, it might be fifteen percent. It's going to make a difference, hopefully, if you have fire, residential fire sprinklers in your house, a significant difference. So there's a lot of different rating factors, and one of the biggest ones is your credit score, actually, in personal lines. So just, you know, they may have gotten a credit one way and lost it another way. So every single home is really different, but I will say that most personal lines carriers do offer some credit based on ISO rating.
Since some of the smaller companies don't, like you said, subscribe to that, would it be the resident's duty or responsibility to contact their insurance agent?
Absolutely, yeah. If the resident has any question, they should call their independent agent and ask them to get confirmation of what discount they're getting, and have they actually implemented the Class II that we now have, because it's only a few years ago we're a Class V. And if they don't like that answer, then go to another agent and get some competing quotes.
Okay, thank you.
All right?
I got nothing.
All right. I think we're good. We just need Charlie's, Charlie's side of things.
Thank you both.
Thank you, guys. And how come your buttons are silver and his are gold?
Well, truthful, I want you...
All right.
My wife doesn't like gold.
Have you seen your wife lately?
What are you saying, Mayor?
We're ready. We're ready.
All right.
Sorry.
The fire station that has been the topic of conversation would be located across from Ledstone Court on Stonecrest Boulevard, property that was given to the city by the Stonecrest developer. The shot that I've got up now, and Tim, if you can show that on our TV channel, the left side, obviously, would be the pull-through apparatus bays. Council, you can see, hopefully, on what you've got in front of you on your tablets, big enough to stack two engines, and definitely big enough for a ladder truck, for our ladder truck. Stonecrest Boulevard is on the bottom section of that. Walmart would be to the left, Serenity Point to the right, as you're looking at the image now on the screen. Within that, within that building, you've got living and sleeping quarters, meeting space, office space, training areas, really a beautiful design. We've been extremely happy with Randolph Builders and ADW Architects and what they've done thus far as, as far as putting the building together, from a design standpoint. On this next slide, and council, you've got a more, a broader version of what I've got up on the screens now. I kind of consolidate a little bit, just so we could get it on the one screen. But as you see, your architectural engineering fees, your base bid was at one point three million dollars. From there, below that list, council, you've got, you see what we've had is, as far as add-ons. And I want to talk through that just a little bit. We contracted a soils testing company to go do site borings on the, on the property. Based on that, our contractor has had to adjust some of the pricing from what we had originally started off with. First and foremost, we've got Class D soils out there, so it's more of a sandy soil. The original bid was based on Class C soils. As they did these, these borings in specific locations, in regards to where the building would be built, they found that it was good field dirt, but it wasn't compacted properly. So the dirt's going to have to be excavated and then put back in and re-compacted it at six-to-eight inch lifts as they go up. This is going to help with future settling, if council elects to move forward. So I'm not going to get into all the gory details of that, but that's why you see a soils contingency, it's really not a contingency at this point, of two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars. There was some changes to the building due to seismic activities and things like that when you're in Class D soils. So that number, that's where you get the twenty-five-thousand-three-hundred, council, that you've got before you. We've had to do some additions in our way of thinking in regards to the driveway and the concrete areas. Most, I think we were originally at a two-inch concrete slab in the driveways, that's gone to eight inches, and different things of that nature. So basically, you're looking at a construction, a construction total, including a ten percent contingency of two million, thirty-five thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars. Now, below that, and you see it up on the screens, additional testing and inspection for soils, that's with that same company, they'll be coming in at different parts and times of the construction and grading process, doing compaction testings and things like that, basically to get the settle, the settling factor on the building from three-quarters of an inch to no more than half an inch. And that was based on the structural engineer's recommendations. Furnishings for the buildings at eighty thousand dollars, that number could possibly come down with some of the one percent money that we do get from the state. And then you see a new fire engine cost, and this is fully equipped at four-hundred-thousand. So the total to fund would be two million, five-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars. You see, if council elected to, we could do a cash contribution from the reserves, the cash reserves that we have, of six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. You would have a cost of issuance, you know, for the, for the geo-bonds at sixty thousand dollars, so your total to borrow comes down to one point nine, well, one million, nine-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars. On this next screen, and I realize it's going to be hard for the, well, actually, that's the next, I missed a slide there, I apologize. Council, on your next, on your next page in your, in your packet, you've got a, you've got a chart from First Tryon. If you look at column seven, that shows you your, what the, what the debt would be. So no payments in 2016, you pay interest only in 2017, 2018, and 2019, fifty-seven-thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars, and then you go on down with level debt service of one-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand, four-hundred-and-five dollars, and it would be a fifteen-year note. Column eight shows you your combined bond debt. Okay? So this is all your, the general fund bond indebtedness, plus the new debt of a fire station. And column nine shows you how much you would have to increase the millage rate in order to pay this. And for the folks that can't see this at home, or sitting here in the audience, column nine is zero. No millage increase would be necessary in order to do this. Now, this next screen, and council, I know it's probably easier for you to see than the general public that has joined us here tonight, and I've got to flip mine on, one second. Oh, I messed up. All right. Basically, just what's on the screen before you now shows you what your, what the tax impact of this bond would do to your, to your overall. So as you look down, let's start with column two. You see the current value of a mill of fifty thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-two dollars. Your next line down in 2017 at fifty-four thousand, three fifty-one, which doesn't seem like a big jump until you look over into column three, where it shows it as a seven-point-seven-five percent jump. That is based on what the Tax Assessor's Office has told us from York County, what our millage, value of a mill would be for TIGA-K for next fiscal year. So we plugged that number in, or as close to that number as we could get, we actually underscored it a little bit in this, as you can see from the next chart. But as you go across, you can see where we've, you know, this is basically use the growth charts that we provided to council last month, inserting the fire debt along with the existing debt, making assumptions of about a one-point-five percent increase on total expenditures for the entire general fund each year with only, with minimal non-tax revenue growth. We figured those at one percent on the, again, the non-tax revenue generated. And you can see that as we go forward, you know, Chief Samansky was talking about, you know, adding some extra employees as we move forward, you know, some additional trainings to further enhance our public safety. As you can see, based on the models that we've worked with our financial advisors at First Tryon to put together, we're definitely to the good in regards to net revenues. I did not put the entire chart in here, I didn't think there was a need to show it all the way out to 2046, like you've seen in some of your others. I figured just going out to 2036 was, was more than enough, because it definitely took us well past the repayment of all the bonds that you've got now, plus if council elects to take on this new additional bond debt. And I don't have this next one. We can post this to the website if council thinks it's necessary, but council, in your packet, that final page just shows the 2016 projections from York County Auditor's Office. It has been our experience that they usually, when we get this, it underscores what we end up actually getting. So they're showing us, just for the general public, they're showing us of a grand total on our taxes at, and this on the, on the assessment, at fifty-four thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty dollars. So we take that amount, we multiply it times our millage rate, which is eighty-nine mills, and that gets, that takes us down to four million, eight-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars. That would be the actual taxes paid to the city, that four million. And then to figure out what the value of a mill is, we divide it by the eighty-nine mills, and that puts you at fifty-four thousand, four thirty-eight. So on the chart before, on 2017, we had listed at fifty-four, three fifty-one, again, underscoring this number, and generally, this number's later than what, what we usually collect. And council, just so you're aware, because I know we all hear it, I've heard it for a long time, that TIGA-K has the highest tax rate in the entire state. We don't even have the highest millage rate in York County. And as far as the value of a mill, you know, we're the third highest millage rate, and we're the third highest on the, on the actual value of a mill, just in York County. What ends up causing, causing people to pay that higher tax is because our assessments are generally higher, the value of the homes are generally, generally higher. Whereas we're not doing tax increases, but yet their, their tax bill comes in, and it does cost them, you know, more each year. Well, here recently, it's been because of reassessments, it's been because of increases from the county, as well as the school bond indebtedness, is what has caused, caused those to go up. Mr. Mayor, council, with that, that is my presentation, so to speak, in regards to the fire department and your funding. If council would like to move forward with this project at this time, I can have our bond attorney, Paul Truch, with Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd, put together a funding ordinance, bonding ordinance for your May council meeting to consider. Paul will be available to come up for that meeting, to answer, you know, your questions that may, that you may have specific to the geo-bond. This would go towards our eight percent debt limit that the city has, which right now, you're talking about, let me go back up here. You're talking about borrowing one-point-nine-two-five million dollars, and your eight percent limit right now is up to right about four million dollars. Yeah, with using a minor amount, six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, of your three-point-four million that you have in cash reserves. So if council would like for that ordinance to come forth, I can begin that process and have it ready for a first read in May. If council chose that option, and you did a first read in May with a subsequent second read in, in June, we would, you'd basically be breaking, we would be able to break ground late fall of this year with about a twelve-to-fourteen-month building schedule, according to our contractor. And that's all I have, Mayor, unless you have questions.
What would be our percentage on the debt limit, did you say, with this bond?
Right now, you're, on your eight percent debt limit that South Carolina law allows you to have, right now, we are at, we have the ability to borrow against that limit at four million. So you would be using one-point-nine of that four million. Every year that we make bond payment, that number, you know, what our borrowing capacity, if you will, just continues to increase.
But what would be the percent of our eight percent that we'd be?
Of this one-point-nine? I can run the, I don't have the number, but I can do a calculation real quick, I'm sure. Hold on one second. Here it, one, nine, two, five, one, five, six. Forty-eight. Forty-eight percent of what you have right now today, it would be forty-eight percent.
With the bond?
Yes, that, well, that, that bond would make up forty-eight percent of what you have sitting in your eight percent. Yeah, you'd have fifty-two percent remaining of your, of your eight percent, based on right here today.
So there are only two potential ways to pay for this, either through bonds or through tax increases?
No, you could, you could deplete your, I mean, you could, technically, you could, you could pay for the whole thing in cash and deplete your cash reserves. That is not what we are asking you to do, and we're not advising you to do that. You know, that, building up the cash reserves, we've been able to build up, is what has given us our, a strong bond rating, you know, as we bring things to council for lease purchases, you know, things like that. It's why we're looking at very, very low interest rates on these things. It's why when we put this, when they put this in a bank place deal, because it is, in that realm of the world, it is a small amount. They would not do this as a public offering, we would do it as a bank place deal at one-point-nine million dollars. It's why you're going to be looking at a percentage rate of probably three percent or less. We won't know that until we actually put it out there, and we will get bids from, from several lending institutions, most certainly, but you're looking at, at still a low interest rate. So we're not, we are not asking city council at all to deplete your, your cash reserves. But that, that is one option. So yeah, you could do a, you could do a millage increase to pay for, to pay for the additional debt, you could do this, the geo-bond, as we have got it laid out, at least broad strokes here this evening. You'd have a lot more technical stuff coming to you with the ordinance. Or, as I said, you could deplete your cash.
No, we don't do that. Was the six-hundred-and-fifty thousand, was there something magic about that contribution?
No, we started off at a million, and talked ourselves out of that, to be quite honest, because we didn't want to, we really didn't want to really hit the cash reserves that we have, any more than absolutely necessary. And as we got closer to that, that half-million-dollar donation, or contribution towards it and lower, then you started to see little ticklers in that column nine, to where you were looking at a point-four mill, or a point-three mill, and things of that nature. So kicked it up to... So kicked it up to where you weren't having to look at a potential millage increase, but not so high to where we're really kind of sucker punching your, your cash reserves.
Okay. And having the bond council work on a bond ordinance and bring it to us is nothing more than that. We're paying them to do it for our consideration, and we can...
Correct. It, it's still not, it's still not locking you into anything until, until you've got a second read on it.
Talk about other options and so forth. Okay, thank you.
Is now when you want to talk about whether or not we have all these ads?
Have all these ads?
Well, for example, the site, the site sign allowance for $15,000.
We can. I mean, if that's, if that's what, I mean, now's as good a time as any, absolutely. I mean, you're, I mean, most of, I would say, all with the exception of full coverage fire alarm, all LED lighting, and the site sign allowance are probably your, well, we could reduce the, the overhead door. I mean, there's, there's some things we could take out of here, but it's going to leave you with a lesser finished product. Some of these are purely aesthetic, some of them are functional, considering where it would be located, partially commercial, partially residential. We wanted to give it a nice look and feel. Yeah, that's why we did the, the full, full view glass on the garage, on the, on the apparatus bay doors. LED is just going to, lighting is just going to save you money in the long run from energy efficiency. Yeah, the, but your, your driveways, I mean, yeah, you can go all asphalt, and every two, three years, we're going to be digging up the asphalt and replacing it. So basically, some of these add-ons were to get a more sustainable, get it to a more sustainable level. But like the site sign allowance, that was envisioning also having one of the electronic sign like we have in front of City Hall, that would be able to play the same message that we have at City Hall. Yeah, so folks living, that may not come onto the peninsula as often, they're still our residents, they'd be able to see some of the coming ons, you know, and different things that we put on, on that sign. So yeah, if there's, if there's specific items on those, quote unquote, ad list that, that I provided, be happy to talk about them.
All right, what is the cut-through island and median for driveway for 15,000?
That will be so that whenever they come out of the apparatus bay doors, they don't just have to turn right, they can actually go straight across, because it's a vegetated landscape median, go across it and be able to make a left turn if they needed to.
I guess where I'm, I was kind of thrown off is these were ads, but really, some of these really aren't ads.
Well, they, they are and they aren't. I mean, we could have asked them to change the building around to where the whole thing was coming in and off, off a ledge stone. It would severely handicap us as far as being able to pull through the building. I mean, some of these things are, are ads because basically, the, the initial bid, and all the bidders did it this way, is this is the shell of the building. You know, you can, you can sleep in it, you can turn the lights on, you got water and sewer and everything else, you can park the fire trucks in it. Now, let's talk through, where do you want it located on the property? What's you, what's your most desirable access, egress, things of that nature? And here's a list of allowances to plug those in. Once councils did the, the award for Randolph and Sons, then we were able to just start drilling it down from just general allowances to more specific pricing on those quote unquote ads.
Okay, so for like the public bathroom for $9,900?
That was actually an advocate...
Next to the other two bathrooms, so...
The initial, the initial design showed was to allow them, basically, if they were public in the facility, they would actually use the same restrooms that the fire staff would use in, in their sleeping quarter areas. Is, if we go back to, go back to it, none of the, none of those sleeping quarters, you know, they've got to go across the hallway over to use the, you know, the shower and, and toilets and whatnot. Well, the first design showed that is, well, if we had general public over there, you know, maybe the schoolchildren came over to visit the fire station, you know, that kind of thing. They would still go into those, there's, what are generally private bathroom areas. They had in a pretty good size, what I'll call IT closet, that really don't need there because of other spaces, you know, that where it could be in the office. Instead of having the general public having access to where the firefighters would use, we, we had them, hey, let's, let's turn this from, from an IT server closet type thing into a public bathroom area. So that increase on cost is for your fixtures that would have to go in there and plumbing and whatnot to convert that room over to a restroom.
And like what Dottie was saying about the other possible funding mechanisms, would sponsorships, are we going to be trying to solicit any of these types of things?
Yes, ma'am. We're, we're already having conversations with some of the area developers.
Okay.
And also grants, Charlie? Are there any grants available for this type of purpose?
Not, not for, I mean, there, there's safer grants, but it, generally, that goes towards personal protective equipment, more so than actually building brick and mortar on the fire station. I've not come across any grants. Chief, I'm not sure if you're aware of any. Okay, Chief's telling me they've, they've discontinued those. I've not seen any in recent time, yeah, in regards to actually building the facility. Usually, the grants that I see coming across are, again, for protective equipment and, and training.
And building on David's comment a few minutes ago, is there an opportunity, or should we try to create one, where we have some kind of a joint meeting, or whatever the appropriate mechanism is, to try to talk to York County about, you know, putting up some support financial, they don't need to build a building, but if we're building one and we're going to...
We have, we have had those conversations, and the, thus far, what we have been told is the, in no uncertain terms, the volunteer fire board that gets funding from the county is not willing to give up a dime of their money, and the county's not willing to make them. They look at that as their money, and they don't want it spread around.
And is it, is that board independent of the York County Council, or?
They get their fun, yes. I mean, they, but their funding comes, is allocated by county council. This meeting was with York County's Fire Marshal, Fire, what is, Fire Marshal Billy Weatherford, as well as County Manager Bill Shanahan. We've had conversations with Councilman Johnson, Councilman Cox, or Councilperson Cox. Nobody seems to want to mess with the volunteer fire board and the, and the money that they get allocated, at all.
Yeah, nice.
I had a question regarding the fire engine for 400,000?
Yes, ma'am.
I was reading some other cities had gotten like demo engines, kind of like you pull it off the lot, five miles, and you have a big...
We have one, we have two.
Is that something you're going to try and get again?
Two of them.
Yeah, I mean, that's, are you going to, is that something that's on a regular basis that you can acquire, things like that? We could try and...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, fantastic. That's great.
Basically, what you've got, with this funding you see here, or this, this request, proposal, whatever you want to call it, is, is a, a worst-case, all-in scenario. Now, this is, yeah, as, as I have told our contractor, as, as I've talked with both Chief Samansky and our Division Chief Les Woods, you get one time to go to the well, fellas. What do we need to do to make this fire station do it right? So this is, the pricing from the contractor is, again, this is, this is all-in worst-case scenario. Now, the bond would work typically like a construction loan. You're only repaying what you actually borrow. Okay, so you get that note, if, if, if council moves forward, and you get that note of $1,925,156, and, yeah, that, that check comes to us, and then we start, you know, we're paying the contractor for this. Well, the contractor finishes everything, and he's at 1.8, the balance of that bond goes back towards a bond payment.
Right.
Okay, so it reduces your, your total overall debt. It's not stuck into our cash reserves or anywhere else. It, it goes directly back into, into that bond repayment. So you're only using and paying for what you actually had to, what you had to borrow.
In terms of fire trucks, as long as one doesn't get damaged or destroyed, what's their useful life, generally speaking? Thank you.
Ryan?
You've got to go up to the microphone if you're going to talk.
I don't have anything.
So Charlie, if I'm understanding you correctly, this is just, you want to move forward, and you're asking for us to allow you to move forward, for a bond attorney to look and bring an ordinance to us and get interest rates and all of that?
Correct. You won't have interest rates at your first reading. You should have them by second read. First reading is, you're going to have a blank in there. You'll have the amount, as far as the total loan amount, to be borrowed, but your interest rate and who the actual bank is won't come until they're actually able to, to push it out and chop it.
That would be potentially second read?
Yes, sir.
Do we know what the, the cost would be for the bond council to do what you want us to do?
That's what your cost of issuance at 60,000 would be.
So for them to do what they're doing?
No, that's, that's for, for everything, not just to write the ordinance, that's, that's to take it from start to close. You know, that, that's all your, your fees to the banks and everything else, for them to take it out, your whole cost of issuance is at 60. And that number may actually be high, but again, it's, it won't exceed that.
I heard a comment when I was at ARFAT's meeting that construction bids are coming in very high right now, because there's, there's just, and there was a concern about delaying projects till later in the year. And how would that, and then, then your price gets better. Would that, is that something that we would want to consider here?
According to, according to our contractor, starting, a, a lot of your movement right now is in concrete, as far as your price moving. There's a lot of concrete in this one. Concrete prices are starting to go up. Building material prices are starting to, but his prices right now, he's good with. He's factored in, you know, some of that inflation, if you will. Yeah, if, if you kick the can down the curb to, you know, the fall, you wait till next spring, it, it's, it's, it will cost you, there's, there's a very high likelihood that it will cost you more then than it will cost you now.
Is there anything, again, I, you know, I'm certainly pro-building this station, but before we start spending money on the bond council to do what you're asking for them to do, is there anything else we should be doing, we, the collective? Have another meeting? Should we be talking through op, options more than what we've talked about tonight? And I know we had a prior meeting where we talked about some of this. Is there anything else we should be doing before we go to the stage that you're asking? I mean, I, I, I know, I think I understand that a bond is going to be included or involved in this process, no matter which way we go. It may be a silly question, but I...
No, no, not really. I mean, it, no, it's not a silly question, and no, there's really not anything else for you to be doing at, or we should be doing, in my opinion, at this time. Bob Barkin, our finance director, and I have, have talked at length, both with our financial advisors that the city uses from time to time at First Tryon, as well as with Paul Truce, our bond attorney. We have had multiple conversations with them over the last several months, you know, as, as they have identified this. Yeah, now, there, there are other options if we start including Catawba Park and, and future funding for, for that. You know, there's, there's other funding mechanisms, but now you're talking about what is a 1.9, you could basically do a, it's, it's more like it's a bond anticipation note. Everybody remembers tax anticipation notes. This is the same type thing, where you're taking out, you're taking out basically short-term loan, bond, if you will, for a brief period of time, until such time you start throwing Catawba Park in there. We're still a little ways off on, on, on our financial discussions on, on Catawba Park. So it, when we're looking just at fire station, fire station only, bank placed, bank placed bonds like this are your, your cheapest and most, most affordable solution as far as your funding this way. Unless, of course, as I said earlier, you, you just want to pay 2.5 million dollars cash out of the 3.2 reserves that you have, so...
And we don't, there's nothing that's on the horizon or on the radar for us, other than things like Catawba Park, but anything that's big, to me, this is big, right? It's small to lenders, but it's big to us. You know, that we're anticipating in the next few years, a competing demand, something, but something else that's health and safety are really vitally important to the city.
Police station.
Yeah, I mean, this is it, right?
At some, at some point, do I know?
Water tower?
Well, that's, that's coming out of a different fund. Water tower, you're talking about a half million dollar water tank at some point in time that would be paid for out of your utility funds, not out of your general funds. This is all straight general funds.
How about PD?
The big project would be a, a, either renovating and the existing police station or building a, building a new one, probably in the next two to three years, is something that we're going to be looking at. Now, obviously, we've been working with, with staff and with Catawba COG. We're finally putting the, COG is finally putting some finishing touches on it, but in June, we're anticipating hopefully being able to do a workshop with council, as well as planning commission on the CIP. And now, some of that is, is, really, your two biggest ticket items on there is fire department, police department, Catawba Park. Outside of that, it's, it's more operational needs, you know, as you go forward, you have vehicle replacements, you have pieces of equipment, things like that. But your biggest capital going forward at, at this point right now, that would be within the general fund, outside of this, would be Catawba Park and your, and a, and a police station, whether it be a full, you know, just remodel or, or a new station.
Okay, thanks.
Counsel, entertain a motion.
My God. I'd like to make a motion to direct the city manager and bond council to bring a bond ordinance for funding fire station number two to city council at the regular May meeting for consideration.
Motion by David O'Neil, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dottie Hersi. I think we've discussed this to death. Call the question, all in favor, single or saying aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number six on the agenda is the city manager's report. Charlie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'll try to be quick with this. This morning, staff met with Comporium regarding our government channel 115. By the end of May, 1st to June, people actually living west of I-77, but not within our city limits, will have, be able to have access to the info that we put on our channel, and they'll be able to do that by actually looking at Comporium channel 126. Right now, people living in Palmetto Plantation, when they turn to 115, they're getting Fort, Town of Fort Mill, yeah, Hawks Creek, things like that, Baxter Village, all they get is, is the, on 115 is Town of Fort Mill. So in our conversations with them, they're actually going to give us a mirror channel on 126 to where it will just mirror our information, and we don't have to put it in two different locations. People living inside of T G K will not have access to 126, but you don't need it. If you've got Comporium, you still watch channel 115. So, you know, we're very pleased to be working with Comporium on that. We had a great crowd at our, at our last concert, the Eddie Z's Concert for Kidneys. And May 14th, we're expecting an even bigger crowd. We got, I think we're up to seven or eight food trucks for the May 14 show. Got a great band, they played last May for us, Euphonics. Should be a great time. The vendors and the kids areas will be set up by six, with the band starting at 7 o'clock, and that's at Rundy Park, and we hope everybody can make it out. Staff is still getting quotes from contractors on reducing the slope on the trail coming out of Trailhead Park, as you head over to the crosswalk going to the Memorial Gardens. We're anticipating having all that information put together to bring back to council for discussion at your May meeting, and, and see which direction council would like to go there. Sewer rehab updates. At this point, we have, just to remind folks, we were approved through the SRF, the State Revolving Fund, for approximately 6.75 million dollars for all the rehab work to date, including payment going out this week. We have spent $635,811. So what have we spent the money on? We have cleaned and videoed 13,452 feet of 8-inch line, sewer line, cleaned and videoed 630 feet of 12-inch gravity sewer line. Folks around the office like to refer to that as our dirty movies, as we're going back and looking at those. Remove, we've removed protruding services into the gravity sewer lines, root balls, things of that nature. So because the funding was identified in three separate categories, we spent approximately 2.9%. Most of the funds we've spent thus far has been on engineering and the cleaning and camery. May is going to be a big month in the way of the rehab. You're going to see a lot of contractors in here slip lining pipes, it's going to be a lot of activities at the wastewater treatment plants. Speaking of the plants, we've reviewed and approved, all the shop drawings and the major, major components have all been ordered. Initial deposits on those items that have been ordered have already been paid. Equipment should be, begin arriving about the middle of May, so I'll be able to provide better numbers on the actual wastewater treatment plant side. on the actual wastewater treatment plant side financially is probably at the next report. Forest Main Project, this is connecting plants two and, plant two over to plant four so that we can have redundancies in the system for maintenance and operation. They're going to begin middle of next month as part of the contract. So May and June are going to be a lot of, lot of activity. But it's been a little slow going here, but we're definitely on schedule and our folks are doing a good job there. T G K Connect, we had lots of people signed up, which was good. We actually had to narrow the list down on some of the neighborhoods, we had so many folks. We did it as a first to sign up, yeah. Some of them have two, some have one, and then areas like Lakewood Ridge, because it is a larger area, we actually did three there. We still need representatives from Windjammer, Neptune's Landing, Mulukai Extension, Mulukai Two, which would be the far end of Mulukai, Marquesas One, Daybreak and Chelsea a Day. If you're watching this at home or you're going to replay it later on the internet, if you live in one of those areas, reach out to us, all that info is on our website as far as what those areas are. Our next steps, we're going to have an introductory meeting with those folks and reaching out to them. Hope to have the first kickoff meeting prior to Memorial Day and then meet again in September after the summer and start quarterly meetings with that crowd in our department head. So very pleased with the interest in it thus far. If you haven't seen, weren't paying attention to Facebook this past week, antennas being installed, stop signs, streetlights, things of that nature. Those are collection points for our new Wi-Fi meters. Those should start going in, going in the ground next month. So very excited to get that project going. I was asked to remind everybody, and it will be in your utility bills this month, backflow preventer testing is required for everybody that owns an irrigation system and we need those back by June first. There's a list of approved contractors from S E D Heck on our utility department website as well as the backflow prevention form. So we encourage folks to check that out on our website, it's on the, again, on the utility department page. And last but certainly not least, again, if you're, if you haven't been looking at social media or some of the blasts coming out from city, our planning commission, Kathy Masters, who's here with us tonight, and I understand Doug Burns was involved in this process, putting together surveys on temporary sign regulations, both residential and commercial. Those are on our website or you can go back to the Facebook feed and find where we posted there. They're very short, won't take you just a minute or two, encouraging everybody to get those filled out. Give us your input as planning commission starts to kind of look at the sign regulations in Ordinance seventy-seven. And with that, I think that's plenty. I think I've said enough at this point. I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
John, could you give us an update on John Weinreter? What's going on, you know, when are we opening, what's the deal?
Sure, I actually met with John last week. If you haven't been into the clubhouse recently, all the painting is done, flooring supposed to finish up this afternoon, this evening in the foyer area, all the carpet has been put in. On Sunday, May first, which is when his contract would take, would begin, some of the older equipment that we're getting trade-in value for, he'll be unhooking that, getting it stored to the side. Monday morning, the new equipment comes in, he'll, he will be getting his liquor license, but he can't get it until Monday. So unfortunately, on Sunday, May first, the bar will not be open, neither will the pavilion. He can't get his liquor license until the current group surrenders theirs and their contract is good through April thirtieth, that Saturday. And Department of Revenue is not open on Sunday. So he'll, he's already made arrangements, he's got all the paperwork to him and everything else, they're ready to roll. He'll be in there first thing Monday morning. By Monday afternoon, the bar pavilion area will be open. The restaurant, they have to, once the new equipment goes in, they've got to get it inspected through D Heck and all that good stuff. So the plans right now are Saturday, he'll do full, he'll have full menu available in the bar and bar area. But basically, the Monday, he'll be open for Mother's Day, looking for a big crowd there. And on Monday, that following Monday after, after Mother's Day, he'll be open seven days a week, lunch and dinner, full tilt. So that's what the schedule looks like right now, per my conversation with him.
The restaurant looks great, the, all the paint and all, but we're still wondering about the sound deadening stuff for the bar, how to make that not so noisy.
Actually started looking at samples today, acoustical tiles that will mount to the ceiling area in the bar. We were finally able to track somebody down that is good at those things and he's given us samples that we've looked at, just fine tuning which color we want to use because they'll be mounted to the ceiling, people will be able to see them. But, yeah, that will be coming in probably in the next couple of weeks. Yes, sir.
What about the basketball goal at Rundy? There's one that's down.
Somebody ran into it and staff's going to be putting it back up. That's fine.
And I was curious regarding the Parks and Rec master plan. I was just looking at that again, the one that was created.
Two thousand nine?
Two thousand nine with the two thousand eight survey. And, you know, we just updated our comprehensive plan and a lot of the things in the Parks and Rec master plan have been completed or I really see that as something we really need to get up to speed in correlating with what we just did with the comp plan. I didn't know if staff had decided they're going to work on that soon or?
Yes, ma'am, that's actually something that I've been speaking with Joey Blesen about here recently now, since council passed the PRT commission thing tonight. As we look to put those folks together, obviously, we've got to get them in front of you for council to approve and appoint, probably in July. And then one of the first tasks that we're wanting with that group is input on updating that overall master plan for Parks and Rec, yes, ma'am.
Fantastic, thank you.
Public comments. You guys still out there awake? Please.
We're not.
John Sherwood, Tepa Place, just a question on the issuance part. I think we had sixty, I think it was sixty thousand dollars we threw out as a number for one point nine million. Is that a, is there like a base number plus a tickler after a certain amount? Or is there, you know, are we going to lose some of the impact and have a larger issuance cost if we go with a lower loan amount, like so we don't use one point nine, we go for one point two, it's still going to be sixty K? So we're.
A very small portion of it is based on your borrowing amount, but it's a very, very small portion. Most of that is, you know, for our financial advisors, fees to the bank, as well as the legal work that has to be done with the bond.
So it actually is a little bit more advantageous than that dollars per issuance if we actually pull a one point nine or two million instead of the six fifty out of the cash reserves? And do like a, if you borrow less, it's going to be a larger cost to borrow.
Correct.
Right, that's what I'm asking, okay? I'm just saying, I want, I want that to be something that council was kind of thinking about when we're looking at. We always want to keep everything low, right? But we don't want to throw money at the banks if we could use it better here somehow. I mean, as you're juggling the books, you've got to keep that in mind, thank you.
Good point, John, thank you. Any other public comments? There being none, move on to council comments, Ryan?
I've got nothing, thanks for coming, thanks for watching.
Well, just want to echo what the staff's been putting out there about the Spring Pick Me Up that's this week. They have reduced rates and curbside pickup. The city website does have a detail on what those items are and I know they've had more free pickup stuff too. So check that out. And then on Saturday, we have the Spring Pick Me Up throughout the city, which is a great event. Starts at nine o'clock, meet at Trailhead, you get gloves and some other freebies, it's fun. It's appropriate for kids and adults. So it's a great way to, the community to spread out throughout our city and do some great volunteerism. And then at noon, you'll have a free picnic as a thank you at Pit Karen Park.
Thank you, Jen. Dottie?
No comments.
David?
Thank you all for being here, it's been fun. Item number nine on the agenda is executive session. Motion to go into executive session to seek legal advice pursuant to contractual matters regarding the purchase of property. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by David O'Neil. Any discussion, there being none, call the question, all in favor, single or saying aye. Aye, unanimous, we're in executive session.